Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, April 9, 2024. It is 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards and on Zoom Commissioner Mejia and Klaus. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. Thurston County YouTube Channel is available for public virtual attendance. We're here for two hours is the estimation to go through the agenda for April 16th meeting and a few standing items. And then we'll have another session at 11:00, I think, with the appointed directors. So I'm going to pick up with item one, which is the review of the proposed agenda for April 16th. That meeting is slated to be called to order at 2:00 p.m. and pledgeable agency to be led by Commissioner Edwards. We will approve the agenda and then we'll have a presentation, which is a proclamation for Earth Day. And we have a draft in our packets, a birthday proclamation. I'm going to look to the clerk of the board. Do we have guests?
Yes, we do. Eli Sterling, who organizes the procession of the species in Thurston County, will be here to accept the proclamation.
Okay, any questions from anyone on that? Okay. That's usually a pretty fun one to do. Opportunity for the public to address the board, county manager's update. Anything we should be aware of, county manager, that you're hearing?
Not at this time.
Yeah, okay. And then we've got a short consent agenda. Item 3A is an auditor item, Accessible Communities Advisory Committee Grant.
Yeah, so the county auditor entering into an interlocal agreement with Washington State Employment Security Department to accept a grant of $25,410 for walking paths to improve accessibility to the election center.
Questions from board members? This is the new building, right, that we're?
Yes, this is out at Mottman and this grant is tied to the accessible advisory committee that the board just renewed last week.
Right. Okay, sounds good. Consent item, second one, is 3B, Superior Court item, a one-time exception to personnel policy is the description.
I'm going to take this one. So one of the things that the county manager does is approve hiring above minimum. And during the time that I was interim, I'd receive many requests every week. And most of the time, I'd say all the time, the hiring above minimum was clearly justified and I would just approve them. So there was one item that came from Kristen Jensen at Superior Court. I approved it. She made the hire and found out after the fact that because it was an internal hire, that there are personnel rules regarding the maximum that you can offer internal transfer promotion. She was not aware of that. I had not been aware that it was an internal hire. So we are asking for a one-time, oh, and the amount that she had offered was above the maximum amount. So we are asking for a one-time exception by the board to our personnel policy to go ahead and set the salary of the individual who's transferring at the higher amount that they were offered at the time they took the job.
Let's see, Commissioner Mejia's hand, but Judge Leneese, you collect on. Would you like to comment on this item?
Only to indicate that I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions that might pop up.
Perfect. Thanks, sir. Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. Robin, I brought this issue last year with the personnel policy and the fact that I believe it's only like a 5%. And I got told like, you know, there was going to be this internal review and that it was going to get fixed. So I'm surprised that this is still an issue.
Yes, Commissioner, I appreciate that comment and I talked to Tara, who said that they are still in the process of updating the personnel policy. The update to the personnel policy is complex in part because all of our personnel policies are combined in a single document and they are working on many changes. But we are working toward an update and this is one of the things that they will be addressing.
I mean, when can we expect it? This personnel policy is, I mean, that policy in specific is so outdated and, I mean,
I agree.
You know, we're trying to retain employees and yet we're struggling with that, like.
I agree. And when Maria is back from vacation next week, I will work with Leonard and Maria to move the update along and get you an answer on timeline.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Is there any issue that could be affected as far as creating a precedent? You're saying in your motion here, I think it talks about one time, but does that negate the potential of a precedent being set? Has, I don't know, did we ask legal? I'm not against whatever you're recommending. What I'm curious about is, are we going to set a precedent?
Does this open the door?
Yeah, from that point on.
This was a mistake. And normally, as I shared with Kristen, the answer would be no, that we would have to follow policy. But at this point, the offer had already been made. We want to honor that. Does it open the door for people to ignore policy? I hope not. And I really believe that the answer here is to move the update to policy as quickly as possible.
And we won't be facing an unfair labor practice or others that didn't get the same treatment?
I don't think so.
And Maria's not here to?
No, she is not.
Okay, and we don't have counsel in the room to ask. My follow-up to all that would be, then do we need to do it today? Is there some big push?
So this is on your agenda for next week? There is a big push?
Right, it's going to be next week.
Right, but there is a push. We put this on as quickly as possible because the person had already been offered the position and accepted it.
And we don't?
So we don't want to drag what their pay will be. We can't drag that out.
Is there back pay that's owed as long as the adjustment's made?
No, no back pay as long as we get this process timely.
When Maria gets back, we can round up your question and see if there's any issues and advise the board accordingly.
So there was a hiring document that was signed by both parties that says, this is what you're going to be paid? And then it was found out, okay. So it's been, it's already done. We just?
Which is the only reason I am before you today. Had Kristen caught it, she would not have offered as much. Had I caught it, I would not have approved as much. But it went through and so we are asking the board to honor the offer that was made.
That makes sense to me. And the judge is all for it. Is that what I'm seeing there? I see the judge on the screen.
I agree that the court is hoping you'll approve this request.
I remember the conversation Commissioner Mejia remembers where this came up and I don't remember where we decided, how we decided. I just remember there was zero support on the board for that policy continuing. It didn't seem to make any sense in the current environment. I didn't remember how we resolved to fix it, but you guys have reminded me, so hopefully we can get that done.
And we could find one time that this had been done in the past.
And this would just, if we changed the policy, we'd just be putting the internal promotions in line with how we?
How we do other types of, yes. One of the other changes that we'll be making to the policy is this policy about only offering the absolute minimum of a pay scale. Instead, the policy ought to be that you're making an offer that is commiserate with the person's experience and education who's coming in the door.
That's competitive as well.
Yes, yeah. Because right now, the county manager has to approve anything above step one.
All right, so it sounds like there's agreement on that one. Thumbs up. Thank you. Thank you, Judge Leneese.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, item 3C is an auditor item, doctor list for the week of April 1st.
That's pretty routine item. There's nothing new to report on that. Okay, questions from the board?
Okay, department item 4A is Family Support Center Federal Office on Violence Against Women Grant, MOU.
I'll take this one as well. So every three years, the Family Support Center applies for a grant from the Federal Office on Violence Against Women. And that grant funding, they've been successful for many years now obtaining that funding. It requires a local government to be in partnership with the Family Support Center to be able to qualify for the grant. The Board of County Commissioners, the county prosecutor, the county clerk, and the sheriff have routinely signed the MOU with the Family Support Center. So we are asking you to do this again this year to enable them to apply for this grant. The grant funds their programs and we have them in the room today in case you've got questions.
Any questions for team back here from Family Support Center? Thank you for coming. I don't see any questions. Sounds like we're good to go. Okay, item 5A is Community Planning and Comp Development Habitat Conservation Plan Land Acquisition.
Yeah, move to approve the purchase and sale agreement of five acres of Tenino Pocket Gopher habitat and a mountain to exceed the appraised value. This is on Angus Road off of Highway 99.
Ashley Arai to answer questions?
Yeah, any questions?
It's the home of the White River Music Festival in 1968, I think. It's pretty famous, yeah, yeah. If you look it up, it was like predated Woodstock by like a year. And it's, I should stop talking. But it's cool because like back in the day, all these hippies like flooded the town and the state patrol had like secret investigators following them around and it was, and you can look it up and it was chaos and like crazy Woodstock style.
On this property?
Yes, well, in that, down the end of Angus Drive. It's pretty cool. There's all, it's well documented by the state patrol. It's pretty funny.
I feel like we should add it to the comp plan historic element.
I, that's where I was.
You want to add?
Some kind of storyboard out there.
Okay, so this is just kind of our routine?
It is. We're really excited.
Property for a certain subspecies to?
Yeah, this would be our first acquisition in the Tenino Pocket Gopher service area. And it would put us at that, you know, put us at that mark where we're two years ahead of where we've been essentially issuing building permits or that debit credit system. So two years worth of credits for two years worth of debits, essentially, even with a smaller parcel. And this is one that was on the open market. So this will be our first time trying to compete in the more open market for property.
So we need to approve this now?
No, so the purchase and sale agreement has been signed by the seller. So we do have a willing seller. What is in here is it's a slight deviation from the Sagewood parcel, which the board looked at about a month ago in that it would authorize the county manager to both sign the purchase and sale agreement and go ahead and close on the property as long as it does not exceed the appraised value or just customary closing costs. Of course, if it did, we would come back to the board because it would be outside that budget authorization. But we're trying to stay within the 90-day feasibility period and not have to pay additional fees to extend it.
Questions for Ashley from the board? Thank you. Okay, next up. Information Technology, 6A, waive competitive bidding requirement for consulting contract.
Sure.
Okay.
So Sheri is dealing with an urgent item that has come to light. So this item before you is the authorization of the waiver of competitive bidding to purchase services from OpenGov. The county maintains our financial transparency website on the OpenGov platform. And with the conversion from Munis to Oracle, we need to update and create an interface between Oracle and OpenGov. Only OpenGov can create the interface between their product and Oracle. So this contract, that's why we're asking you to waive the competition. There's no one else out there really who can do it. And this contract is to create the interface and it will be paid from the project budget.
Okay, questions on this competitive bidding waiver?
Internal auditor's good with it?
He has reviewed this and I believe Sheri's got the document attached to the AIS.
Okay, questions? Good to go. 7A, Public Works, BNSF Railway Grade Crossing Construction and Maintenance Agreement for Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One.
Yeah, this item would approve a grade crossing construction and maintenance agreement between Thurston County and BNSF Railway. Any additional details you want to talk about?
Yeah, so this is the last piece that we really need to go to. I'm sorry, Matt Unsmann, Thurston County Engineer. God, I hadn't done that all year. So this is really that last piece that's needed to go to advertisement for the Marvin Road project between 22nd Avenue and Union Mills. The Board of County Commissioners has already given Public Works permission to go to advertisement. We just need to get this agreement executed between BNSF and the county. As part of the project, BNSF will be removing the crossing that's just south of Union Mills on Marvin Road. That's actually a benefit for us because it's actually cheaper to pay BNSF to remove that crossing than to pay them to relocate it because of our project impacts. It's about $222,000 when you consider that we also have to purchase the underlying property. We never actually had an easement at that crossing, which is actually fairly typical when we have projects. We come up to the railroad crossing and we realize they just punched the road across there sometime and didn't get legal authority to do so.
I wonder how that happens.
They used to do a lot of things back in the day.
I've seen it a few times. When you say remove a crossing, what does that mean?
So there's a couple of components to this. Is there's actually removing the physical tracks and the concrete that surrounds the tracks at the crossing, but then also removing all the crossing equipment, like the crossing arms? And then there's that little electrical hut or they call it a bungalow. And that bungalow is full of all kinds of electronics and so it's removing all that.
They just don't need this part of the?
So right now, the tracks have not been used and it's just a spur line and they haven't been used in some time. And so it's a benefit for us, but it's also a benefit for like, think about all the school buses. They no longer have to stop, stop right there. And when a school bus stops on Marvin Road, it creates what we call a rolling queue. So they stop at the tracks, traffic gets behind it, and then that queue moves all the way down the corridor. So it's a good thing for everybody.
Are even the tracks being removed?
Yes.
So then what, they're just abandoning that line? Commissioner Edwards?
What happens to the rest of the line that's not affected by any of this? Is there a certain area that they're abandoning the whole thing? Doesn't that go to the warehouse or plant?
It used to go to the, I think you're talking about the Georgia Pacific?
Maybe.
Yeah. They no longer, everything that comes out of that plant is by truck, so they no longer use rail at all.
So what's going to happen to that section of?
It just won't be used. So they're actually going to be installing a piece of equipment on the east side of the intersection that won't allow trains to even go towards the intersection. And so the tracks will still remain. There's no plans to remove them, but they just won't be used.
There's no connection there with any of our trail system?
It ties into the portion of Lacy's, South to Shaleless Western, yeah.
So is that something?
Something to talk about.
Might be exploring to enhance our trail system?
Sounds like a topic to be?
But not for today.
To be discussed later.
What do we want to talk about?
But yes, they're not being used, so that's definitely an option. It could be abandoned.
Any other questions from that? Okay, 7B, Public Works Contract Award for Pacific Avenue Pavement Preservation Project.
Yeah, this would move to award a contract for the Pacific Avenue Southeast Pavement Preservation Project to Lakeside Industries.
Yeah, so Lakeside Industries was the lowest responsible bid with an amount of $1,609,615. We've done a lot of work with Lakeside Industry in the past. We have a good working relationship with Lakeside. All project costs will be paid for using a grant from the National Highway System. This project will be a mill and fill, which means we'll take the top two, we'll grind the top two inches of asphalt off of the roadway surface and then we'll put new asphalt to replace it. What's interesting about the asphalt that we're using on this project is that we'll actually have fiber strands in the asphalt and that will allow us to get a longer lifespan out of the pavement.
Is that a product that Lakeside offers or is that something that we put in the bid?
So the Lakeside plant is doing it as well as the Granite plant over on 113th, they're doing it. So pretty much all the plants can do it. Some of them honestly can do it better than others. I will say that Lakeside is probably one of the better.
I think Lakeside does an excellent job, so I like it when I see a responsible bidder end up getting things.
So this, sorry, I didn't finish this. So this project extends from Carpenter Road all the way down to Union Mills. We'll also be improving sidewalks, sidewalk ramps, driveway aprons, all the urban amenities to meet ADA standards.
Okay, any other questions on pavement preservation, 7B? Okay, thank you. We will go to 7C, Contract Award for Yom Highway Pavement Preservation.
Yeah, this is another pavement preservation project. Want to provide the details?
Pretty much ditto to the one before, except the project limits on this one are on Yom Highway between Rich Road and the Shaleless Western Trail. are on Yelm Highway between, uh, Rich Road and the Shaleless Western Trail. And again, we'll be improving all the sidewalks and sidewalk ramps to meet ADA requirements. And the low bidder on this one was granite construction with a bid of two million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars.
And the money comes out of?
The National Highway System. This is also fully, the whole thing.
Very good. Thank you.
Will they also be using the fiber strands?
They will also be using the fiber strands. Um, just a little bit more information about that is pretty much all the agencies in this immediate region have been switching over to the fiber reinforced asphalt. You pay about five dollars a ton extra. But when you consider you're getting ten to fifteen extra years of life, that's, that's money well spent.
Good. Could you go? Uh, next up is seven D Interlocal Agreement with City of Rainier for Sports Courts Amenities.
Yeah, this is an interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the City of Rainier for improvements in the counties of Yelm, Rainier, to Nino Trail Corridor. Right away to include sport court amenities and I believe it's some pickle courts, picnic tables and other amenities. Anything you want to elaborate on?
Mike's gonna take this one.
Good morning Commissioners, Mike Loman, Road Operations Manager. Um, this is an agreement with the City of Rainier to build its now four pickleball courts and, uh, other infrastructure related to that on the Yelm, Rainier to Nino Trail Corridor, uh, adjacent to Wilkowski Park. This, the board will remember this agreement was, a similar agreement was signed in October of twenty-two. The City of Rainier put out bids. Bids came back much higher than anticipated. The board was able to allocate additional funds to support the project. The city has identified a successful low bidder that meets with the new money the board has allocated. This agreement will supersede the old one and take into account the new funds that the board has allocated.
Mike, where's the money coming from?
It is both park impact fees and REIT two funds.
So three hundred thousand. The board approved additional three hundred thousand from park impact fees and a hundred and thirty thousand from REIT two.
Thank you.
Any questions on this one? This has been percolating for a long time. Just jotting down that. Okay, looks like there's no questions on that item. So we'll go to seven E Project Prospectus and Local Programs Funding Agreement for, uh, State Route five oh seven and Vale Road Southeast Roundabout Project.
Yeah, this is an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation and authorizes Director Public Works to execute Prospectus in agreement with all subsequent amendments and supplementals for State Route five oh seven and Vale Road.
So this is part of a much bigger project. Um, this has been something that we've been working on with, um, the legislature and, um, our other project partners. So the project includes installing three roundabouts. That count, Thurston County will be responsible for installing the roundabout at Vale Road and five oh seven. Pierce County will be responsible for installing the intersection at seven oh, the seven oh two, seven oh two and five oh seven. And City of Yelm will be responsible for installing the roundabout at Bald Hills Road. In the current biennium, um, the state, um, approved two point five million dollars to go towards the project. In the upcoming biennium, um, the remaining of the estimated seven million dollar project cost is accounted for. So we have a, a fully funded project once they sign the transportation, um, funding package in July, I believe. I'm looking at Robin. So this would be of that two point, of the initial two point five that was allocated in the current biennium, we're gonna take four hundred thousand dollars of that and request that we obligate it now so that we can begin the pre-design study for that intersection. Um, the state initially did some preliminary design at this intersection, but they were proposing what's called a compact roundabout. And, um, Public Works, um, is going to look at going with a full-size roundabout. And the reason is, is because when any event occurs on I five between, um, Dupont and City of Lacy, all the traffic gets diverted through Yelm. And so they go through Yelm and they ultimately, to avoid going down through the congested downtown corridor of Yelm, they'll use Vale Road so as a way to bypass. So this would be able to accommodate all of that heavier, bigger, larger I five traffic during emergency events.
Vale Road is gonna be the bypass route?
Yeah, so what happens is, is it during, during an I five event, City of Yelm is just gridlocked, right? And there's no move in traffic. So, um, we're working with the state to use a portion of Vale Road and then somehow we're gonna end up coming back out, um, downtown Rainier.
Somehow.
Well, there, there is a method.
Out there's a plan.
I just don't have it memorized, to be honest.
So in terms of the funding that, uh, cause that was one of our legislative, um, achievements this past year was to get the full funding for that, that roundabout. The difference between the compact and the, the single lane or the full roundabout, is that all within the funding that's been allocated or would we have to look at other?
So the seven million dollar cost is based upon the estimate to construct a full-size roundabout. So if, uh, for some reason we wanted to go back to a compact roundabout, we would have more than enough funding to do so.
So I just wanted the board to, to understand that it's fully funded for the full-size roundabout and not the, the compact that was our.
So does that sound like it's gonna come down Vale Road to Hundred and Forty-Eighth? Hundred and Forty-Eighth into Algers Road of?
It does end up on Alger, Algar Road. Um, all, what I can do is, um, I'll send an email out with that proposed. They call it incident management detour.
I'm all in favor, but I'm just, if I could ask, you know, I'd like to know.
I'll provide that. Everyone.
Is there gonna be a new intersection at Algers and five oh seven? How are they gonna address that?
Um, oh, downtown Rainier?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'd have to ask Wash Dot.
Okay, more to come, sounds like.
Thanks, Matt. Let's go to item, uh, seven F, I believe. Which is Project Prospectus and Local Programs Funding Agreement for Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal Phase One Project.
Yeah, this is an agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation and authorizes Director Public Works to execute Prospectus in agreement and all subsequent amendments and supplements for the Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal Phase One Project.
So Public Works received two point five million dollars in federal funding from the Culver Aquatic Organism Passage Grant Program, otherwise known as AOP, as you'll hear, hear me say going forward, to put towards the Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier, um, Barrier Removal Project. So this project will replace a culvert, um, on Country Club Road that previously failed with a hundred and fifty-foot long bridge. Wash Dot will be administering the federal funding, um, much like they do on a, a lot of our federal funded projects. So whenever that occurs, we need to execute funding agreements with Wash Dot, which include a project prospectus as well as a local agency agreement.
What's our timeline on this project? Is it still on track or?
I got big news for you and two, and two items. Give me two items.
Okay, so wait?
Series in the general.
I'm gonna steal my thunder.
That's not all. Yeah. All right. Any questions on the, the project prospectus funding agreements? Moving this along. Nope, okay. Then let's go to seven G Project Prospectus Local Program. Okay, this is same thing but phase two.
Exactly.
All right.
So phase two, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Take it away.
Phase two includes, um, executing funding agreement, um, for, uh, five hundred thousand dollars of the same funding, AOP funding, um, to provide pre-design analysis for two crossings upstream, which include the Thirty-Sixth Avenue, um, stream crossing as well as the Kaiser Road crossing.
Okay. So. I'm sorry, you probably just said this, but what's phase, what's the difference between phase one and phase two?
So phase one is the actual pro, the country club project itself.
Okay.
The construction project.
Yeah.
Phase two are addressing, um, fish barriers upstream.
Oh, oh, right, 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 okay.
Two locations, Thirty-Sixth Avenue and Kaiser Road.
Awesome. I didn't know we necessarily gotten those. I know we were trying to get those included. But we're gonna be able to go forward on those too.
That's good. How many, how many more stream spawning miles or what are we gonna end up with?
Um. I'll have to follow up on that one.
Be kinda nice to know, I think.
Well, this one in particular, yeah, we had support on this one from the, um, Riot thirteen speed entity and the Squawson Island Tribe because of this, the additional fish habitat. So that'd be a good stat to have when we go through this one. Okay, good. Then let's go to item seven H. Resolution and call for sealed bids for Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal Phase One.
This is the one you're very excited about?
This is a huge milestone. This is a, um, this is a longcoming, um, moment. Uh, so where Public Works is requesting to call for sealed bids for the, um, Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal Project. Um, as I mentioned before, the project's replacing a five-foot culvert that previously failed with a hundred and fifty-foot long bridge. The estimated cost of the project is nine point six million dollars. Three point seven of that is a Public Works Board loan, two point five comes from the AOP Grant Program that I just talked about. Five hundred thousand comes from Thurston PUD. Uh, two point five five million comes from REIT two, the, uh, real estate excise tax. And two hundred thousand comes from the road fund and another, another hundred and fifty thousand comes from the stormwater utility fees. So altogether, we put together six funding sources to get the nine point six million dollars, um, funded.
This was a project, um, for county managers' benefit. We had a failure, like a critical failure. And there was a number of different possible approaches to resolving it. And we had a community group formed and they did a study and they came and presented to us and the board kinda debated because the, the price tag on the various options were, were very high. So we ended up choosing, you know, the bridge, which was a kind of the best in a matrix of all the pros and cons of every different option. It was quite an elaborate process to arrive at the solution. But then we had to braid all, all these different funding sources together. And we tried to leverage the fish habitat issue to get, to actually include upstream culverts, which sounds like we're successful there. So all around, and we got some federal funding and from, from Congress, uh, Senator Cantwell, is that right?
Senator Cantwell, yeah.
Senator Cantwell's office helped us, uh, secure some funding that we don't usually get on these types of projects. So it's just been a huge success story for us.
I understand the excitement.
Did that answer your timeline questions?
Pretty, uh, well, I mean, we're still having a, I mean, I'm just, I'm just forgetting where the, um, where the endpoint, the projected endpoint has been, end of point five or?
Uh, so I'm gonna talk about road closure here in a couple items.
Cause I know we have ecology, we have the ecology sort of watching us in terms of.
Correct, because we have a fish window that we have to meet. So at a minimum, by the end of this summer, we need to have all that fill removed from that ravine. The bridge won't be constructed this year. The bridge construction, just because of the lead time to construct the girders, the bridge construction is probably gonna end up being earlier next year.
If you look at a picture, this is like a wall of dirt.
Fifty feet, you said?
Yeah, it's fifty feet.
Kinda like your dam, right?
With a straw through it at the bottom. So it's quite a project.
Yeah, we'll have to be sure to do some site visits on that one.
Get some dynamite, blow that whole section out.
We might not take you out there.
I wish one of those plungers like in the cartoons. Okay, thank you. All right, then that, that gets us through I. No, that got us through H. So now we're up to seven I Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Thompson Creek Road at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project.
Want to provide the detail?
Yep. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sealed bids for the Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project. This project will replace a ten-foot corrugated squash culvert with a seventy-foot prefabricated bridge. Uh, the removal of the barrier will open ten miles of upstream habitat. Uh, this culvert will also eliminate road fu, road flooding during high river or high water events. The estimated construction cost is seven hundred and fifty thousand. Five hundred thousand of that comes from the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board. Eighty thousand comes from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board. And the remainder will be, um, utilized, will be funded utilizing REIT two funding. What's unique about this project is we did a previous contract for the bridge. So the bridge is a prefabricated bridge. So we, um, last year, um, came to the Board of County Commissioners and requested permission to purchase the bridge. So once we hit the contractor on board, we have a bridge ready to go.
You said seventy feet?
Seventy feet.
And is Warehouser working on part of this culvert to open that ten miles up?
No, that's just from, just us opening that, fixing this one barrier.
And there's not some blockage farther up from logging roads?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I mean, ware, it is Warehouser property upstream.
And where exactly, I mean?
Sorry, I should have provided some, um, vicinity limits. Uh, so this Thompson Creek Road comes off of Skookum Chuck Road, which is south of Tenino.
Yep. And when you talk about ten miles, it's like, it's gotta be somewhere in a pretty remote area. I've never even heard of that kind of, you know. Usually it's in the more urban areas.
Don't tell them too much. It's a nice area. It's, it's beautiful out there.
Okay, very good. Um, then we go to J, which is a resolution for temporary closure of Country Club Road from Country Club Loop to Fortieth Lane Northwest.
Yeah, this is a fifteen-month timeframe between June first to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Find the project details.
For sure. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to close a portion of Country Club to accommodate the construction of the culvert replacement project. Uh, this closure would be in place for the duration of the project, which is expected to take fifteen months. Access the property, private property will be maintained. Currently, this road is used by two hundred and forty-seven vehicles per day. The detour length will be two point one miles and will take approximately six minutes. A communication plan to notify stakeholders such as local residents, emergency responders and school districts has been developed. Uh, notice of the closure will also be published in the newspaper, posted on our website, sent out in social media and put on electronic reader boards on site prior to the closure.
Any questions on road closure?
Okay.
You can have.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, eight A is a sheriff department item. And the item is purchase of K nine from Aberdeen Police Department. And I thought I saw the sheriff. Chief Monsius.
Yes, nice to meet you.
All right, we have this item to allow the sheriff to enter into a purchase agreement, fifteen thousand. Police Department purchased certified K nine and associated equipment, Thurston County Sheriff's Office K nine program.
Thank you. Good morning, board. Uh, so this is the, uh, purchase for, um, a special market item through the Aberdeen Police Department. Um, one of their handlers is laterling to the sheriff's office, um, and in the. Um, and in the process of that um lateral coming over, Aberdeen does not have a purpose for the dog anymore. So um, we, this year are gonna be in the market um for a couple canines. We have, what, one vacancy currently, um, with maybe another projected vacancy. And we're also adding a fifth canine handler this year um through grant funding. So we have the Halloran Grant, um, which I believe, we already did the site tour with, with uh Halloran. So um, we have spend it or lose it money this year uh for the canine program. So um, with that being said, we, we thought it was an opportune time. Um, we've kinda restructured the actual canine unit. Um, right now, we currently have four handlers. One of them is a sergeant who promoted with his dog. Um, and I wanted to shift that sergeant into a lead role of the canine unit, so we actually have some stability in there. Um, some background context is that each handler who applies and gets a dog is given one life cycle of a dog. Um, and I wanted to have some stability in the unit. It's a great unit, uh, and it, it offers us the ability to capture people we otherwise never would have the opportunity to capture. Especially the most common are domestic violence suspects who flee a residence on foot. It's when we most often get used um for the canine stuff. But the ability to have that fifth dog with one of those being oversight over the actual, and keeping up with the training and the case law and all those different types of things. And then having the four handlers underneath that, that one sergeant or lead um was gonna be super beneficial to us. So that is what this purchase is for, but it is purchased through grant money.
Questions for the sheriff?
Wasn't this dog and handler trained through the same process that we use?
This is correct.
So I mean, we're not bringing in kind of an outside blend to mix in. This has been an ongoing training session for some period of time, hasn't it?
Yes, so the dog was certified about two years ago, went through our training academy that Sergeant Devon Bagby put on. Uh, he's a master canine instructor. So this dog's already using our veterinary services. It's already in the same program. All of the training has been documented in our login system uh through Sergeant Bagby.
Commissioner Claus?
Thank you. Um, I just had a question about where we're at with the process here. Um, has this officer already been lateral'd and accepted and like they have a start date and everything?
Yes.
Okay, and does this officer, um, are they under the impression that this uh dog purchase is for sure gonna happen? Or um, are they aware that there's a process that needs to be followed?
Can you explain a little bit further? So I, the, the handler, the, the dog is being purchased because the handler recognizes that there's no other purpose for the dog. So it is not necessarily that this handler will be selected for a canine. That is the, the risk they're willing to take um by basically having the dog sold us. I mean, otherwise Aberdeen would just try to reassign the dog, but they don't think they'll be able to. They don't have any other interest with applicants for the position. So it is entirely possible that this dog could be assigned to a different canine handler, a new applicant. Um, and at that point in time, we've done that before, where a new handler will get paired with a different dog. Um, so yes, there, there is the possibility. However, he'll also be a competitive applicant during the process, obviously.
Okay, so this is already a dog that he's been handling uh during his time in Aberdeen?
For two years, correct. Yep, and we helped certify the dog. And part of the, part of the trade back to Aberdeen is that we will um get them into the next training session for their next dog. Because we run all of those certifications, the four hundred hour certification. So um, that's kind of the, the trade-off for them.
Okay, and then uh, my last question, just to clarify, the dog has not been purchased yet by Thurston County, has, has it? Cause that was unclear to me when you were giving uh the context.
That's what this today, that's what today is for, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fornier, uh. To me, it, it's a smart move. It's a good deal. It's not that common that you could get a package deal like you're getting the lateral hire and the dog purchase are two separate issues. But they are certainly complimentary, so I mean, it's a, it, it's a smart move in, in my opinion. And it's important to note that, like you said, it's grant funded, so.
Assistant County Manager Campbell?
I just wanted to add that this is a grant from the Mary P. Halloran Foundation that can only be used for the purchase of the dog. So it's, it's, it is the way we need to use.
So we can purchase it on a good deal for a dog, or we later spend more money on a dog, have to get somebody that's trained with that dog. And so, I mean, it's a screaming deal.
The other piece to recognize too is that dogs don't always work out. So the opportunity right now to buy a dog that we know works, that we know, I mean, even, even taking the risk that dog has to be paired with another handler um is still better off. We know the dog can be certified and meets all the expectations of, of a tracking dog, so.
What is the canine?
Sherman Shepherd.
Do Sheriff was.
What would you estimate the savings to the taxpayers are by, you know, training, time, as money? Purchasing the dog as money?
It will depend. Um, if this handler, we suspect, would apply for, because we put that all part of our lateral package, right? That they can put in for specialties as soon as they're off NTO. Um, if this handler were to get selected and obviously paired with their dog again, uh, well, it's whatever the rate of four hundred hours times sixty-eight, well.
Two hundred.
Uh, it's a four hundred hour certification for a brand-new dog, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's four hundred times whatever the overtime rate is for a topped-out. Um, that's how many hours.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
The equipment and everything would be the same purchase, obviously. It's roughly about thirteen thousand dollars for a dog. Then you have to have a kennel, the leads, all that stuff, uh ballistic vest. So some of that is in the, the, so it's turned in, the four thousand dollars in gear is coming with that, that canine as well. So versus buying a thirteen thousand dollar dog and then additional four thousand dollars in equipment as well. And some of this money, just one thing, we did not use this money last year for the Halloran uh fund. So we had to get permission from them to, to turn it over to this year. So last year, we were looking at purchasing another canine and that kinda fell through. We did testing and, and couldn't fill the canine handler position for that. So they authorized us to hold it over for one more year to, to use that money this year. Um, they don't intend to, to extend that again.
I wanna point out that this is a good example of the lateral incentive program working, in my opinion. So, you know, it saves us money hiring a lateral. And then there's, there's, you know, secondary benefits like this that, that save us money too. So I think this is a good example of the, of the lateral program.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
I guess I'll say you'll have to bring the puppy along.
Yeah, he's a good boy.
Okay, next up is items eight B, single-source purchase flock safety.
So we had a meeting with uh, the Budget Office last week and I still have a number of questions. Um, but I also misinterpreted how these single-source procedures go. Um, I was under the impression that the single source was separate from the purchase. Um, that just because we get single source doesn't mean we have to then immediately go spend all of our money on something. Um, I, I, I was viewing this in stages and not necessarily one just complete package. Um, Assistant County Manager, is that your title now? Okay, I didn't know if you switched yet. Um, Assistant County Manager Campbell, advisement note, this is all one package. So if we do the single source, that means we have to go buy the cameras right now kinda thing. Um, and that was not really my intent. Um, I'm also still having a hard time wrapping my mind around the general fund and the new tax money. Um, because it's, I'll be honest, it's, it's really challenging now to figure out just how much money we have. Because my understanding is that, you know, everything's getting kinda mixed together. And it's gonna be very challenging for us to understand just how much money the commissioners are putting back in this fund for other stuff. Um, and so when we were looking at these items, we were basically, all we were doing was looking at the total fund balance this year for Proposition One. And then how much money we had left over after we lined out all of our expenses. But the understanding I have now is that the money that carries over is just gonna be used to absorb pay raises later on and things like that. So it's almost like the money's already been earmarked um in a way. And so I'm still not quite sure how I'm going to budget for that. Because under current terms, right, I see where I'm gonna end at the end of the year. Um, and historically speaking, as I'm sure you know, at the end of the year, that's when probably a lot of departments and offices make expenditures for things they've needed. If they have vacancy savings and stuff like that. And that's where we were coming at with flock and Star Chase and these units. Um, but now to know that the money's gonna stay in the account, but we can't necessarily access it or understand how much we're gonna have left. Because it will all depend on what the commissioners decide to do later. Um, I don't really know how to balance the budget at that point in time. So under that context, I recognize that maybe this is all for nothing, I guess. Because I don't know what money will actually be there. Um, it's all kind of contingent on how much money the board decides to put in from general fund. Um, with that being said, I still believe, you know, I met with I T um and flock last week. Um, I, actually Sherri was there as well. Um, and you know, my, my question with Sherri, they were asking a ton of questions um that I know Commissioner Claus brought up about privacy and all these different things, and I T didn't share those concerns. Um, and, and I was basically like, I need I T, I need you guys to tell me if flock is bad. Um, and they said, no, it's, it's not bad. They said, there's, there's plenty of things in here that are not of concern. Uh, we confirmed that flock does not have access to the, the law enforcement criminal justice database. They use a public database, not a law enforcement one. So the same one that anyone else can go check for stolen cars and things like that. So um, all those things uh considered, our goal today wasn't necessarily to go buy a bunch of flock cameras. It was to just approve the sole source because we've done that late work. Um, we've checked out with Public Works and Roads, we've checked out with I T. Um, the last phase that we're in right now, I think, we've already, have we already met with legal? Yeah, we've met with legal, so we've, we've gone over all those things. Um, it wasn't necessarily to go purchase a bunch of cameras today, though. So that's, I guess, where my presentation comes to an end, because I'm not quite sure um what the direction will be.
For the sake of clarity, the board approves a sole source along with a contract. It's directly tied to a contract, so we wouldn't approve a sole source ahead of time. And then have any officer department go out and get a contract. You approve them both at the same time. And the sheriff is not prepared with contracts at this time. So I would say that that's the case for items B for flock, C for the um. Stock Enterprises and D for Star Chase.
I see hands. I was just gonna say that, that, I was surprised, I mean, cause all that, all that kinda confusion that you just kinda laid through, like, I didn't realize that we'd even made a decision. I mean, we had the presentation, there was a whole bunch of financial questions. There was other questions, especially on the flock, and I didn't realize we'd even discussed it or said we were going forward with it. So I was kinda surprised to see these on here, but maybe we can, you know, delay this for further discussion. But anyway, I saw Commissioner Claus's hand, I think, first.
Um, it sounds like my comments, people are already kinda getting to that conclusion. I was just gonna ask if we could remove those three items from the agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Fornier?
Um, yeah, I, I think there's, you know, there's still more discussion to be had. So it's probably not, again, not ready for a Tuesday item. Uh, I do wanna mention that uh, if we do continue with the flock safety uh camera discussion, the city of Tenino has like fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to purchase these. But now they're saying they don't have money to do the ongoing maintenance afterwards, so they would be willing to purchase a couple, potentially. If the, if uh, the sheriff was to go down and, and maybe talk to the chief, they might have the ability to purchase some of the cameras for the county. And so like, there, there could be some savings there. Uh, and then just like a, I kinda had a thought when talking about the, and I, I do think the flock system, if employed correctly, uh, would, would be a public safety uh benefit. And then when talking about the uh, kind of worries about private, private information. And in my looking into, I don't see it there, and I actually kind of heard yesterday that basically the Visitor Convention Bureau has more access to personal information and sharing personal information and tracking people than uh, law enforcement does currently. So like, I, I, in a, in a, in the technology age, all of this stuff exists. You know, you could track anybody's, you know, name, number. Uh, that's not necessarily what flock does, but I, you know, when we're kind of getting big brother-y, it's uh, you know, tracking cell phones and things like that is, is, is scarier to me than a, a camera system that can identify a license plate. So I, I, it was a thought that I had yesterday when Annette was presenting.
Commissioner Fornier?
I'm wondering in terms of process, Robin, does, I mean, do we need to have this conversation also during the budget amendment?
Uh, only if the board were considering adding appropriation authority for the sheriff to purchase these items.
Okay, so then, I'm just trying to like, I'm just trying to figure out, like, I guess, just everything, so. So if we were to move forward with this, then we would have a conversation during the budget amendment where we would do appropriation. And then after that is when the sheriff could come back with the single-source purchase and contract.
If he needed additional appropriation authority, but what the sheriff is proposing, if I understand, is that he would make these purchases within its current appropriation authority. He anticipates having vacancy savings that he would use to make these purchases.
So then we wouldn't have this discussion because there wouldn't be an additional appropriation. It would just be within the appropriation. Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. Um.
So instead, what, what would come before you is when the sheriff has a contract that the board is ready to approve along with the sole source.
Okay, I guess where I'm at, I would wanna have the body cam discussion before these because I wanna know what the impact of that price is going to be. Uh, and I know that's, that's like a big need for your office. I know the current cameras are not up to par and there's been discussions about moving on from those, so.
Certainly.
Do you know the timeline for those?
Well, I, and, and again, all of these things were put into motion last week. And some things have changed. Uh, I would definitely say that my number-one priority for this office to protect our employees right now is moving on from G-TAC cameras, especially after recent events. Um, because like I've explained to most of you, um, our current cameras are not recording all the time and they do not have the pre-thirty-second record. And the biggest concern I have right now um is that something occurs and, for instance, a deputy gets assaulted and then they turn their camera on and it doesn't capture the assault. And all that it captures is the aftermath of the assault. Um, so in light of recent events, that has um sprung to the very top of my priorities um is to get acts on as soon as possible. Like if we could purchase it tomorrow. I know it's not possible. So in light of all of that, I recognize that flock may be a more distant goal. Um, where I will disagree personally is, is pushing the other two off. Um, Star Chase and the grappler are both de-escalation tools for us and those pursuit laws are coming. Um, the change is coming, the policy update is coming. And um, as we've seen lately, uh, you know, even with Lacey Police Department on Sunday and their pursuit down I five, like the pursuits are, are getting more aggressive. People are not giving up. They're getting pit maneuvered and ramming and driving the wrong way down the freeway. I mean, they're doing anything and everything to escape. And um, I just, I recognize some concerns um with those laws coming to an end. So um, these next two items aren't an invasion of privacy. They're not, they're not anything other than saving the high-dollar lawsuits um that could occur in the event, you know, that a high-speed pursuit goes wrong. So um, that's what I wanted to present. You know, the flock thing is kind of its own separate thing. But the other two are items um that totaled under a hundred thousand dollars for both. They are both pursuit mitigation tools um to end high-speed pursuits, both in their own unique ways. And also there is a, um, last year, they put out a grant, a couple million dollars for pursuit mitigation technology. We wrote a pretty competitive grant but didn't get in. Um, and our hope this year was to start these two pilots and then come back to the grant and say, hey, we already have some of these systems in place. We'd like to expand on it to increase our chances of getting additional grant funding to outfit an even larger portion of our fleet with some of these tools.
So, um, I'm kinda glad to hear that summary, cause that's kind of where I'm at too. I think that those two, these technologies that are related to the pursuit safety are important. I'm not there on the flock thing, I have a lot of concerns, but um.
We do have contract bids from those two items that are valid, so.
So that's what I was gonna ask is, based on what you said, is that, is, are we saying that we could move forward on the, those two? I'm looking at Robin.
If the sheriff has contracts prepared. uh, and ready to go, and is ready to make these purchases, then the board could approve both the contract and the sole source for it, if those are ready. Um, if I may also ask a question, have you worked with ERNR on how these items would be attached to your vehicles?
Yes, I spoke with Doug over there, and then on both items, the first initial, so if we purchased five, and I'll just uh, use a Star Chase for an example, if we purchased five of those, they will train our people, they will come out here, they will train our people, one, the installing side of it, and then two, the operators. Once the four are installed, then they will certify our people at, at county shops to install any additional future ones, uh, that we purchased, you won't have a, an installation fee, if you will. Uh, but talk with Doug, as soon as we get to the point where we're able to do that, they'll assign some people to that training date and get certified by these entities to install them on our, on our patrol vehicles in the future.
But to answer your question, Robin, no, we would not put these on ERNR, because we don't, we want to test, that's the whole point, we want to test these out. We don't necessarily wanna commit to either one of them long-term. If, for instance, the darts aren't sticking, or the grappler doesn't work, or anything, or it's not effective. Um, so we didn't wanna jump right into ERNR replacement for something that we are more or less looking at it as a pilot. Um, and an opportunity to get grant money to increase the pilot program, and figure out if it's actually working or not. Um, with all these technologies, the most we can do is try.
I appreciate that, but even just attaching them to the cars is part of the ERNR program.
And I, I think our conversation was we keep them separate. So, the shop would still do the install on the vehicle, just like we had to remove a feature from the cars that we, that I initially brought to you guys earlier last year, uh, a piece of equipment to, because the car costs kept increasing, we actually removed that from the vehicle, um, but we still have the ability internally to buy it separate when we talked with Bruce. So he was okay with, hey, just buy the container for your SWAT operator separate, it's a, it's a lockbox container for things like explosives and whatnot. So we can still buy those on a case-by-case basis, as opposed to equipping the whole fleet with them, and it's the same, it's the same concept.
Commissioner Klaus.
Um, I would like to see a little bit more info before I feel comfortable approving something like this. I know when we have our presentation on Flock, um, Star Chase and Grappler were part of that presentation, but we kind of ran out of time with commissioners having to leave for other commitments. Um, so I'd be interested in seeing the purchase agreement or whatever contract you have drafted up right now, and potentially another conversation with my seatmates about the details of this, since we ran short on time uh, previously. And I know there is a sense of urgency with the pursuit laws changing, and you said that's in June, is that right? June or July that the pursuit laws will be addressed?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, it sounds like we have at least enough time for another conversation about the details of this. Um, so I would propose moving this to maybe an agenda in two weeks, um, so that we have a little bit more time to discuss it.
Commissioner Fornier. Are, do any other agencies use these in Washington or in the Northwest?
Yeah, uh, the grapplers used by Shalane County, they're a little bit slower, so they kind of told us, like, maybe you should be the ones testing these out, since you guys seem to um, have a lot more going on in Thurston, and then Star Chase is actually used by quite a few agencies, uh, Redmond, um, they're basically a bunch of Valley agencies.
So places where it rains. Like, I was thinking, sticky wouldn't work.
And they are less effective, I've read a study on them that showed they were less effective, obviously, in the rain. Um, but with, with these things, again, I'm, one of the big things that I wanted to do personally, right, I advocated for this law change, but I also doubt, doubt to want to say, well, we're pursuing cars now, so be it. Um, anything that we can do to mitigate the risk of high-speed chases, I want to at least try, that's been my big thing. Um, I don't just wanna send, I mean, and we're also, um, doing a second EVOC training here in May, um, as well as my, my EVOC instructors are developing a, uh, pursuit decision-making classroom-based course, and the agency will be going through that, and then we'll also be giving that to all of our new employees when they get onboarded. Um, just because, again, right now, the, the pursuit thing is a big concern for me just because of how aggressive people are being.
We would be the first in Thurston County doing, using these pursuit alternative technologies.
We would.
Commissioner Edwards.
What are the ongoing expenses that will be affiliated with any of this stuff? Whether it be the Flock or any other.
Flock is a set fee. Um, so in their contract, everything is included, so if the cameras get damaged, or, you know, a camera falls off a pole, or a car smashes into.
Is it a monthly rental, yearly rental, what is?
It's, it's a, an annual contract. Yeah, I believe the one that we had proposed, we were working with, was a two-year contract. For the twenty, I think it was twenty cameras. Um, for Star Chase, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year per car, um, and that gives you access to the hardware, the software, and unlimited darts. So they keep sending, they keep mailing darts as you, as you need them, so if you tag a hundred cars, they send you a hundred darts, if you tag one car, they send you one. Um, and then the grappler, I believe, is two hundred and fifty dollars a net. So every time that you, every time that you, three hundred, three hundred dollars a net, so every time you disable a vehicle, it takes ten minutes to reload it with a new net. Um, and those nets are three hundred dollars a piece. So, but, we compare all those costs to even just one injury collision um, as a result of a pursuit, um, or as a result of a person fleeing a pers, uh, a traffic stop, or we don't even, I mean, Fife right now is getting sued. Fife right now is getting sued for attempting a traffic stop on a stolen car that took off, they didn't chase, and it T-boned someone in an intersection five blocks away, I mean, it's, anything that we can do, in my opinion, to try and mitigate that stuff is, is good for county risk.
I saw a video of the Chehalis Western Trail. Yeah, and there's like people, dogs, right, along the thing, and and then, and when, then when the guy finally got, supporting your earlier point, when the guy finally got completely pinned in, he was still trying to.
Still trying to get away.
Still, I don't know what he thought he was gonna do, but he was still trying to.
Still trying, and that's the difference in mentality that I've just seen in my short time with the sheriff's office, is like, you used to pick cars and they'd give up, like, that was scary, and now they just keep going, and keep going, and keep going, uh, until something bad happens, and so, um, yeah, and in this case, both of those pieces of technology, whichever one, could have assisted on the trail. If you have Star Chase, you tag it with a dart and pull over, and then just watch him on the map as he drives around. If you have the grappler, you get behind him and grab onto him, and there, there, it's just two completely different ways to capture people or stop them, um, to try and de-escalate the pursuits.
Commissioner Klaus.
The current, oh, sorry, I was gonna say that, just to add to that, the current ways that we do stop these pursuits, they cause thousands of dollars in damage to our cars, even if, even if we don't injure anybody or anything, but just like that one there.
Yeah, I was, and I was thinking that very thing, because I was like, I didn't really, I've heard you guys talk about the maneuvers, and I never actually, like, seen the videos of it. But to see how you do it, it, it's like banging the cars, like, oh, there goes, that's gonna cost them money to fix, that's gonna cost them money to fix. It's like, doesn't seem to be an ideal, uh, way of, I mean, you gotta do it, but.
We even had the recent one where the person's going ten, we spiked the car, that's another way that we get cars to stop, but ultimately, they'll just keep driving on rims until they run out of gas or the car breaks down. And there was another one on I five where we pit a car at ten miles an hour, and it's, and the deputy had just got their car back, and it's the slowest pit maneuver you've ever seen in your entire life, and as soon as they get in the ditch, they back up as hard as they can and ram him and cave in both doors, and then the other car, they ram into another patrol car, and you're just like, okay, that's two more cars that are out of service for three months while they get repaired. Sorry, Commissioner.
Commissioner Klaus, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, like, to clarify, I don't think that this is necessarily a bad idea, um, to, I mean, certainly we wanna reduce the dangers of the pursuits, but just having a little bit more time to look into this, um, most of my time has been spent researching the Flock stuff, since that was the main point of discussion. Um, so I would, again, ask if we could push this to the next agenda, just to give a little bit more time to look into it. Um, from what I've researched so far, I don't have many concerns about, I mean, I have a couple of concerns about Star Chase, but in terms of, like, lowering the risk, um, I don't have any concerns about that so far, it seems like it could be a a good tool to lower the risk of pursuits, um, but I would just like a little bit more time to look into it before we approve it.
And I do remember, Commissioner Klaus, that I think Commissioner Edwards had to wa, wasn't able to even hear the Star Chase and Grappler, because you had another meeting. I know she's right.
I may have, but I probably, maybe I, uh, I don't know if I Zoom hooked up, or.
Okay.
What it was, I, I'm satisfied.
All right, well, in terms of getting these items sorted out, so we're gonna, we're gonna remove the Flock safety for now. We're gonna take the other two, and can we push them two weeks?
Two weeks is not a meeting, one week is a meeting, and then three weeks is a meeting, right?
Well, we have five Tuesdays in April, so we actually do have a meeting on the Thursday.
Let's put the other, my proposal, just based on Commissioner hearing, what Commissioner Klaus proposing, is to put items C and D onto the thirtieth, and then the board can follow up with whatever discussion, Commissioner Klaus would like to have, um, and, and the rest of the board.
Gives the sheriff an opportunity to attach the contracts and the system.
And then we could get them, potentially get those all done, with the two pieces that need to be together. And that's well in advance of the timeframe that the sheriff has laid out. Go ahead, Commissioner Fornier.
I, I, I was just, I was also thinking, leaving the two B and C items on agendas also creates the opportunity to talk in a public forum about them, if we also want additional, like, opportunity for public comment, or, you know, but, so, I mean, you could, I'm good with either way.
It will take a couple months to get these ordered and outfitted, too, so.
But if we delay another three weeks. How much of a delay is that gonna cause you in the end, so you're ready to go?
It's hard to say, and again, this is all theoretical, so it's hard to hard to predict the future, but.
So does that give you any heartburn if we delay this for a couple weeks?
Not particularly, no, I mean, on June sixth, the laws change, so that's just where we're at, um, regardless of the timeframe, so.
Sure, yeah, is that okay? Okay, so we'll have items eight, B, and C, sorry, eight, C, and D moved to the thirtieth agenda, so we'll have a couple times to review that. And, um, we'll, there'll be further discussion about item eight B. Thank you guys for coming in.
Commissioner, do we need to resend that, that PowerPoint that had, I know we can probably take the Flock part of it out of it, but the, the information on the Star Chase and Grappler that was attached, I don't know if everybody got a chance to see that, or if we need to re.
So we can certainly arrange for a time in the next two weeks for you guys to come back and chat with the board during a work session.
It might be, yeah, one of those work sessions where we kind of talk about item, hanging items, so to speak, and we can have those slides available then.
Just to confirm, the dog is still moving forward.
Dog is moving forward.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so now we are up to, oh, it's kind of the end of the agenda, we have county manager items, uh, standing items, and we have a public hearing at three o'clock. Is that right, three o'clock? Usually we do three thirty. Just three o'clock on the agenda.
Was it noticed for three thirty?
Yes, it was.
Noticed for three?
For three thirty.
Okay, so this is just typo.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Perfect, so make sure we get that fixed, and we'll have a three thirty public hearing on fair board reapportionment and fairground fees. Jeremy Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners, again, Jeremy Davis with Community Planning Economic Development. This public hearing is on proposed changes to our code for reapportioning the Thurston County Fair Board, um, and this is to accommodate, again, the transition from a three-member to a five-member Board of County Commissioners. The effect of the code change will have Thurston County retain our current fair board members, reapportion them to the five commissioner districts based on their current address. We'll have one member required to live in district, the other one can be at large from each commissioner district, and then we'll have six additional positions at, at large. Um, that's a decrease in overall at-large positions, the fair board, of course, stays the same number as we had before, sixteen. Yes, sir.
So, I think last time I was clarifying that, like, it's two per district, but one's at large?
Yes, sir.
So the only meaning to that is it then, it's like the planning commission where the commissioner nominates, the way we do for planning commission? Because otherwise, that'd be kind of, it'd make any sense to have an, an large person assigned to a district.
Yes, sir, and it's the nomination process for both of those positions.
Just like planning.
Just like planning, so we need to, it's, I mean, that's the only one, I just wanna clarify that, because that's the only one where it's really the commissioners have to bring forward nominations, so this is something for us to be, and I know I've got an open seat, so I'm gonna have to get busy. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely, sir, and then, uh, again, also part of the public hearing is to remove, um, several specific fees that are in county code, um, and that's to allow us to keep those, to update them, number one, but then also keep them up to date, and the county manager would be empowered to approve those fees by this code change as well. It will also allow us to charge fees, um, when the new fair manager starts that are commensurate with the facility and the cost of the facility.
So it's just enabling? It's not setting anything?
It's not setting any fees with this, we have fees that are set in the current code. They were set, um, probably like ten years ago or something like that, so quite some time ago, and we're unable to update those fees without approval by the Board of County Commissioners in a public hearing at this point in time, because they're in county code, so. And it's also not a typical way the county sets fees, typically we set fees via resolution or other process.
And back to the, to the composition, we have youth seats?
Mm-hmm.
Are they separate from the two?
They're still on there, and they're still in there, we only reapportion the actual appointed fair board members that are from each commissioner district, and the six at-large ones, the six remaining at-large ones, the youth ones are still there. We also have an added ex officio one, remember? Um, so everyone's still there. Um, the goal of this particular code change was to retain all of our existing fair board members and the newly appointed youth members, or soon to be appointed youth members, I think they may have already appointed them, um, because we didn't wanna lose any of those great volunteers that we have working for the residents of Thurston County to make our fair an awesome place to be.
And so attachment B, uh, in the ordinance, does sort of do that portionment or reapportionment? And will, the mapping happened, it also looks at the tweaking of the four-year terms and the expirations to, to help facilitate the staggering as well.
Questions for Jeremy?
All right, thank you, have a good morning.
So this will be, uh, our chance to hear from the public on that. On sixteenth at three thirty. Okay, uh, that takes us to the end of item one, so let's go to proclamations and awards. Clicking board in the ears.
The draft proclamation for Earth Day is attached. Again, Eli Sterling, who organizes the procession of the species in Thurston County, has confirmed his attendance and acceptance.
Sorry, were you able to reach Ralph Monroe?
Ralph is pretty well in capacity.
So who should she reach out to regarding the kids that usually come home? All right.
Do you have that contact?
Tom Cena can help you on that, if you need him. Frequent contact, Mr. Barnes. And then, April thirtieth is Asian American Pacific or I, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, it's probably good to get a head start on.
Yeah, I've reached out to the South Patriot Town chapter of the Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition.
Is that Lynn Crowe?
Yeah.
She's usually a good speaker on these issues. Were we looking for somebody else to come in for Earth Day, is that, did we miss that part?
For the Earth Day?
The, the kids from the school usually come.
From the, okay. Marshall Middle School, they do Earth Day project, because they have that CSI program, citizens science.
Oh, not crime. Or invest in like, you're doing.
CSI, it's like a special program where the kids do like more hands-on learning, and they're always doing projects in the community. They always have a big Earth Day thing, and they'll come in, and they've done a PowerPoint in the past on like all the projects they've done.
They say the Park Foundation does a countywide Earth Day cleanup as well. James Reddick is. Along with the Lions Clubs throughout the county, that's pretty substantial.
Just wanted to make sure we gave an opportunity to the groups that come every year.
We should have a list of our events, um, because there's events, I think Lynn's right about the Park Foundation, they partner with like Tom Water and Thurston County, we've got one.
They partner with the Lions Clubs, and then, yet each, I think, park throughout the county, they invite the schools from that jurisdiction, and they have a contest, and whoever has the most kids that turn out, they win money for that kid's schools, it's pretty cool. Something to promote.
There's, uh, most of the events, I believe, are on the I'm looking at Tom Cena, which is a day, like, the, remember how Fri. Fri. Co. is like a week later, but most of them are the week prior.
Tomorrow, the twentieth, and then the Fri. Co. event is on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so we'll have those kind of handy for me here, so I can kind of, I can highlight them.
Yeah.
So people know all the different birthday events that are happening, if Thurston County's involved in Fri. Co. one, I noticed, the following week, so that's.
Would you like us also to highlight the Lions Clubs and what they?
The, well, the Park Foundation, their event, at least, you know, if we could help.
I think they might all be together.
I, I know the Fri. Co. thing, that the Park Foundation's involved in that, too.
Yeah, and they're involved in the Tom Water one, yeah. So I think they're, we're talking about the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions or anything else on?
Not on proclamations.
Okay, questions from the board? Okay, then let's go to advisory boards and commissions.
First, just a quick update on the current recruitment. I've been slowly but steadily receiving applications, and I'm confident we'll be able to address some of the vacancies that have been listed for some time on this cover page. Next, I have an update on the salary commission. Seat five, District Three representative recently became vacant due to the prior appointee moving out of District Three. For RCW thirty-six seventeen oh-two-four, the vacancy must be filled within thirty days. The seats that represent the districts are selected by lot by the county auditor. So the auditor's office timeline is listed near packet and is as follows. The auditor's office selected by lot, about two hundred and fifty voters within the district. Letters were sent this past Monday, yesterday morning, to the pool of names with a deadline to respond if interested in serving by this Friday, April twelve. The, yeah, the pool of names are numbered, so one through two fifty, and the auditor's office will reach out to the respondent with the highest number. So regardless of if someone responds today, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, the respondent with the highest lot number will be responded back first to confirm that they're interested in serving. So the auditor's office would like to include the appointment on the agenda of April sixteenth, if it all aligns, or on the April thirtieth agenda at the latest.
Any concern?
I missed the planning session where you discussed the salary commission. It's my understanding that you wanted to follow up and make a decision on how you wanna go about having salaries set, so, you know, not having that decision, we should move forward and fill these vacancies.
Yeah, I didn't get, my, my editorial comment is like, we didn't, I didn't come out of that session with a firm, confident level of confidence that we were, you know, gonna find agreement on any one particular change. It felt, you know, like a lot of the previous discussions where there were pros and cons, and we did want some follow-up with some certain set of questions that we asked, but, you know, I definitely think we need to keep our, keep our current structure, you know, intact and moving forward, because there didn't seem to be, you know, necessarily a change coming. But, maybe, but maybe not. So I agree with you that we need to keep this, this train moving forward.
Right. So there are, there is actually only one of these ten positions that is currently vacant that would be filled by a lot.
Correct.
The other two vacancies are for organized labor and professional personnel management, and-
Those are not pointed by the lot selection process, but by the board, like most of our other boards and commissions.
So why are those, are, are those just vacant because we've been holding off on making appointments? No, there are no applicants.
No applicants that I'm aware of.
It is included in our current recruitment though.
When it says organized labor, it's not low, it's not the county union, it's organized labor from anywhere in the-
You want someone who is familiar with collective bargaining, so it could be anyone with that experience.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter where.
I see.
It's just that they have that type of experience. And the same with the professional personnel management. You want to find someone who has HR experience, not the county staff.
Okay, I was, I was thinking it was an internal thing. Okay, that makes more sense. Gotcha. Interesting.
Okay, so we're on track there. Any other committees you wanted to highlight, Amy?
Not at this time.
We don't have any applications hanging fire that we're worried about?
No, I've been-
Other than the ones here?
Yes, yeah.
It's funny when you see people in there. Sorry, Commissioner Fornier. Okay. More to come there, it sounds like. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is PIO check-in. Okay, any questions for Megan? No? Okay. Then we have item five, Commissioner Items, sub-one, Deschutes Estuary Restoration ILA.
Okay. Commissioners, I will pause by saying I apologize, but I dropped the ball on this. This was sent over for comments, and I unfortunately saw it, and then I was waiting for Treasurer Gammern to submit comments, and then he was like, oh, no, it's, you know, and I just, I dropped the ball. And so I have the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project ILA in the packet for Commissioners to look at, and if you have any comments on it, I'm asking that you provide those by Friday. I apologize for the shortened timeline, but this is not really different from the one that we really saw before. So if there's something that Commissioners would like to comment on, just please let me know by Friday. I, Robin, did you have any comments on the ILA?
No, Commissioner, thank you. I would just add for Commissioners to be aware that should we sign this ILA, the county is committing to a roughly two-point-nine million dollars to be paid at some point in the future for sediment management. And I recall the conversations about that commitment. I do not recall the board making a decision to commit the county or where the money would come from. So just know that it's in there.
That's two-point-nine million over, like, eighteen years or something?
Over a long period of time, yep. And in the future.
Can we put off like a balloon payment after eighteen years? If you have a-
I don't think they'd go with that.
No. We have something coming up, and I'm your alternate, so they wanted me in there as well, and to remind me what it is that we're gonna participate in, like a listening session or something?
Yeah, they're just going to be gathering information just based on comments if we have any.
I might ask the county manager to attend that, just, it might be the best way to get up to speed. This is a huge community issue that's got thirty years of history and is kind of stumbling toward a conclude, you know, a kind of a resolution, but it's something to sort of like be aware of, because it comes up in various contexts.
I, I-
We'll get it to you.
We'll get it to you. Another thing I would like to add, I would like to have some sort of executive staff support in those meetings, right? I know before someone attended them with you whenever they could, and I, I would like that support as well, just because there might be something that I don't catch on to, and I don't wanna say yes to something, and then-
Gotcha.
Have us on the hook for it, so I just, whoever it is.
We can connect on this and get up to speed, and we can figure out who, who we assign to help out.
Okay.
Because I hear you're the devil's in the details.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the closest we've ever gotten to solving this issue.
Okay, so that's just sort of heads up, and Commissioners will look at that, and get that to Commissioner.
Gone through the legal review yet?
I don't know if this has gone through legal review.
Can you run that down? Thanks, Rob.
Okay. That just brings us to the end. Other Commissioner Items, Commissioner Fornier?
I have another Commissioner item. I'd like to talk to you all about a very unique opportunity that we have, and the Grand Mound area, we've talked about that, and the, and that, that whole sub-area plan, that we have been talking about doing a planned EIS statement for that area, and we got estimates of the cost to doing that to be about three hundred thousand dollars. However-
For what?
The, for the, the Grand Mound UGA. To do that study and do that EIS, to get that done, it'd be about three hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars.
Just as the docket items that we were trying to move, or something bigger?
This is bigger. This is the Grand Mound UGA. We're trying to get a, a planned, help me if I'm getting the words wrong.
A community plan.
To get that community plan, so that we can have kind of a streamlined process for businesses and for development, and if we, if we do that EIS, it, it, it helps us facilitate businesses coming in at a, at a lower cost. For us to do that, the, and, please, come up and help. Ashley got an estimate that would be about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars. However, if we act now, we can get it for half off by including it into our comp plan study. I will shut my mouth, because there's people that are better at talking about this now in the room than I am, but, uh, go. Go ahead, I'll stop.
We're just in the next ten minutes, can we get a two-for-one?
This is bogus. We got, we got a good deal here, if we act.
So Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, thank you for bringing this topic up, Commissioner Fornier. This has been a longstanding kind of back-and-forth conversation with Commissioners and the previous county manager. Staff in CPED was being responsive to Commissioners' request on how we might proceed with moving forward on a planned EIS for the Grand Mound sub-area. And Ashley did, I think, a great job of trying to find a creative solution to honor the Commissioners' requests. So that is kind of what the Commissioner Fornier has teed up. Ashley, would you like to provide more information on the mechanics that you've engaged with our consultant on this potential opportunity?
Yeah, there are a number of pieces already in place that the county has invested in, so we've got the sub-area plan that was approved just last year. We also have the industrial land study that was completed last year, and those are essentially the cornerstones of being able to do this planned action EIS and engaging, and in engaging the consultants. Since we're already doing a supplemental EIS for our comp plan update, I asked how much additional monies it would cost to include essentially a planned action EIS for Grand Mound. The, the savings is in the process, so EISs require a lengthy process. If, if this was just a standalone item for Grand Mound, that's where that two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollar price tag comes in. By folding it into the overall comprehensive plan, we get a savings, essentially.
Can you, you say planned action EIS. I don't know, really know what that means. Never heard of it.
I don't know if Rob wanted to, I'm happy to.
No, you, you have the better technical language than I, but-
Yeah, I mean, essentially you, the county gets to identify the types of uses that would be appropriate on the industrial lands down in Grand Mound, and we can study all the environmental impacts of those uses, like that mix of warehouse, manufacturing, so looking at things like how much traffic is gonna be generated, what kind of impacts would those uses have on groundwater. So your traditional environmental review, but we front-load it for a larger area, let, let's say all the industrial land, and so that way, when that individual property comes in for development, they don't, as long as they propose something that is in alignment with that environmental review we've already done as the county, they don't have to do their own.
Their own what?
Their own environmental review, their own CPAD.
And that's for a specific type of industry though, right? It's for industrial only, or is it for?
Housing as well, right? Housing comes with a few, a few caveats under state law. Larger-scale commercial could be folded in under the planned action. I will say that there's a new tool in the environmental review toolbox that the state gave us, it's called the infill exemption, EIS.
What exception?
Infill.
Infill exemption. We'll get all kinds of wonky here with planning terms, but essentially, and, and this is already included in our environmental review that we're gonna be doing as part of the comprehensive plan, but for things like multifamily or affordable housing, the zoning that allows those in Grand Mound, we're gonna be able to do the environmental review for those upfront. So think of this like whole planned action EIS, but applying it specifically to housing. And that's a new tool, but that one's already included. We already folded that one in because of the housing element.
So, back to the county manager's question, the reality is, this is setting the stage. And so this allows for an opportunity for a conversation that hasn't been had, what can be done in those areas. The bulk of the zone is zoned industrial, and so that would be the starting place, but if we hear throughout the conversation from the community and the Commissioners that this should be commercial, this should be more housing, all those alternatives could be folded into the potential outcomes of this planned action EIS. And to just go really high level, what then, so this is setting the stage, this is a planning document. You engage with the community, the Commissioners make a decision, and the box that the Commissioners decide out of that outcome of the input that we're received, that is, allows for those developers, back to Ashley's point, to not go through a lot of the regulatory process, because we'll have done it for them. But we can't get the cart before the horse, because we need to have all of that conversation first about what the community wants, what the Commissioners want, what's appropriate, what the environmental impacts would be. There's critical area reviews in that area, so there's surface water close to the, there's water close to the surface. So it's hard to slow the what's it going to be down, because we're still at the very beginning, and what we're saying is, we don't know what we don't know, but we have an opportunity to hitch on to the comprehensive plan process that we're already engaged in, instead of trying to do this on a standalone process.
It sounds like there, there could be some discretion as you go through the planning process-
Most definitely.
That Commissioners would have, and so again, it's a starting point, but then once the process is informed, that's, the options could change.
I think that is definitely fair.
And, and streamlines that, that future state for folks that come in, make proposals that fit within the parameters of the, what has been studied.
I guess I just wanna add that I think this is, this has been a long time coming, it's way overdue, and I really think that really this can put in that investment that we've been hearing from that community, right? Like, make us feel like a community, bring all of this together. And I know that Jenica is also working on seeing if there is funding available, right? And I know that different partners are, are reaching out. We're going to be reaching out with Commissioner Fornier, with the tribe as well, to see if they would like to partner on this, but, you know, I think the, the first step is, you know, is the board entrusted in this investment? And, and I, I, again, I believe it, it is a worthwhile investment for the board.
I think it's an exciting opportunity, and it allows us to somewhat direct development in the way that is envisioned in a plan for the area. Just to get ahead of a question that may come up, I see Travis is on the screen, and not to put him on the spot, but perhaps Travis, you can tell us how, since this would normally be something paid for by the private developer, how is it not a gift of public funds for the county to pay for it upfront in this way?
Yes, and hello, good morning. I, I think those are good things to think about. I, I would say offhand that it is unusual for the public to be provided environmental assessment for future planning actions that may, that they may, you know, may be able to benefit from. I, the one thing that comes to mind is, you know, just any kind of sub-base and planning, right? Arguably, that helps a certain, a certain type of sector of business to, to be able to be successful. I'd have to know, quite frankly, I'd have to know more about the, the scope of this work to really assess whether it, it, it does trigger the constitutional prohibition against public gifting, but offhand, it's not setting off alarm bells, but probably something that needs to be looked at carefully.
And I think, if I could jump in, that's a good question, from the Assistant County Manager, usually, not usually. Sometimes CPED is on the vanguard. We're breaking through and covering new ground. We're not in this case. Planned action EISs have been accomplished in Pierce County and other counties throughout Washington State. So what we would do is follow the model that they've engaged in in terms of the process to ensure it is proper.
And often, through the comprehensive planning process, you know, one of the requirements that we often have are related to reasonable measures of how do we, as a jurisdiction in our planning, actually create that incentive or that, that ability to facilitate that, the, the development as we are planning for, and this is just one of those tools.
Just wanna make sure we-
Cover our bases.
Commissioner Klaus, I thought I saw your hand, but it knows down.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that I-
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that I appreciate Commissioner Fournier bringing this opportunity up to our attention and that I trust that conversations are in good hands if Wayne is talking with stakeholders about this. From what I can tell, I mean, yeah, Commissioner Fournier always has the best interest of those residents in South County in mind, so I would be comfortable with moving forward onto the next steps that are being discussed.
Okay, Commissioner Fournier.
I, the, the, the gift, the gifting thing, you know, it's interesting, but like, I, I would imagine that if that, that only becomes an issue if it's, there's one specific business that's benefiting typically. Like when it's open to anybody to benefit, there's kind of, sometimes you can make an argument that it's not, I, I would think. I don't, I don't know, I guess.
You've got to be able to demonstrate a public good.
A public good.
Whether it's a specific entity or broad.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm just looking to have that, you know, analysis.
Certainly.
When the question comes, we'll be able to say, "Yep, did it, see, here, it's all right."
In order for the county to realize its goals down there, this is a step that probably needs to be taken. I think that this is a, a good opportunity to save money that we would eventually be spending later, but, you know, how exactly do we find that money? We're asking that, or like I'm asking and then the group that met yesterday is kind of hoping that we can move this forward and the county say, "Yes, we're on the hook for this no matter what, but we will be out looking for other opportunities for funding." And there might be a couple. There's no guarantees, but, you know, we're going to be, you know, looking under the rocks that we need to look under. So I'm, I'm thinking we are hoping that we can give direction to CPED staff and then it would be covered in a budget, in the budget amendment or something like that. And we would have some more answers for, you know, private funding or if we can bring in additional funding from elsewhere. The EDC is ready to work on this with us.
So, so, you know, since you mentioned the budget, I think that the deadline for the budget amendment has come and gone.
Okay.
And I'm going to turn to Josh and ask if the Board does not amend your budget or if grant funding doesn't come, do you have sufficient appropriation authority to cover this additional, how much?
$150?
$150,000 in your current budget.
So let's talk about the way that the cost of the $150 is the total amount and it's spread out over the two years of the comprehensive planning process. So that, I would look at what we have currently in the spending authority. I don't have those numbers specifically at my hand right now, but we would phase that approach to ensure that we could meet that. At this point, the capacity that we've got approved is for the bulk of the work that the Commerce Grant has provided, plus the climate change stuff that the Commerce Grant provided. So I would say tentatively yes, but need more information.
This is a cost increase to the plan you're already doing, right? On the scope of work. Raises the cost.
That's right. And that's...
So that if, over a two-year period, you could come back at a later time if you needed additional funding.
That's what I'm getting at, yep. And the, like, there's two pieces, so shifting away from budget just for a sec, this is adding on to the scope of work, but not adding a docket item. So we don't need to reopen the docket. That's what makes this, again, more efficient. The reason that we in CPED want to try and move as quickly as possible to either a thumbs up or thumbs down from the Commissioners is we don't want to slow down the comprehensive planning package totally to wait for that to sear. So that's, if you're feeling a sense of urgency from us, it's to keep the big comprehensive plan on the track moving forward. And the consultant needs to start that work. Probably they need to have an answer by the end of April on what is the workload, the scope of work that they're going to be working
So I don't raise my hand for myself, so I'm going to jump in. Then I got Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Mejia in a second. Who is the stakeholder group that you're meeting with?
There's, we had a group yesterday that was the EDC, VCB, Commissioner Mejina, Mejia and I, our staff, Jenica.
Jennifer.
And Jennifer from Public Works.
Okay.
But then we're talking outside of that to bring in more stakeholders and if there's other groups that might be able to contribute funding and things like that, we're, we're discussing that now.
So one thing I'm curious about is you're talking about environmental impact, like what you described sounds more like streamlining permitting for, you know, future development in industrial zones. What we've talked about in the past is a more comprehensive look at like, like if you remember when the Grand Mound docket items were up and we had a lot of public comment like, "Look, we don't have a grocery store. We don't have a park. We don't have a school." Like, we don't have, like, we don't actually have what a community needs to be a community. You expect us to live here and work here. You want to put all these jobs here, but there's other stuff that needs to go with that. Let's plan this out so that we have a more like, like a real community there. Is this going to connect to that or is it more superficial than that? I mean, not superficial, but more limited in scope the way I described it at the first part.
Yeah, we, we've been looking for funding for that sort of place-making, the bigger community visioning.
Yeah.
We have not been able to find a grant for that yet or a, you know, a pathway for that yet. Although that's at the front of my mind along with all the other pieces. I think it's hard to find that million-dollar grant that's going to satisfy all of what the community wants to see out there. And so what we're trying to do is divvy it up into pieces where we think we can like make some progress here while we're still...
That's fine. I'm just trying to understand what, you know, what the scope is of what you guys are proposing.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair question. So if you'll recall during those conversations, the County Manager at the time had concepts of the Fredrickson Planned Action EIS in Pierce County. A piece of that is this planned action EIS where you set the groundwork for what the zoning is. So there's a lot of ideas that have been floating around, but this would really kick off formalizing those ideas that then could lead to that bigger place-making conversation. But right now, we, we're not even, we need to see what we have currently on the table and what the community and the Commissioners would like to set for the table in terms of zoning and allowed uses. And that's what this is. So it's a portion of that larger conversation, Commissioner Minzer, that you're recollecting. It's not the overarching everything, but it's, it's the good first step.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards is next. I don't know if Robin was gonna, did you have a, were you...
Oh, I was just going to ask Commissioner Minzer to remind us what group that was that you participated in, in Grand Mound. It was a Grand Mound UGA sub-planning committee.
Oh, the UGM? That's...
The Mayors, the Mayors and stuff, I think.
That was with TRPC. That was with TRPC on a UGM as well, I think.
I'm not sure what Robin's asking.
So you had participated in a group in, in Grand Mound?
Yeah.
Where the, kind of the vision for the area was discussed. What group was that?
I don't know that I...
I think she's referring to when we had the site-specific rezones in the Grand Mound sub-area plan and the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee of TRPC.
They have to evaluate any proposed expansion of the UGA. That's not really about anything other than like what the crit-, legal criteria are for expanding a UGA. That's nothing about the vision.
Any of this, okay.
Yeah, it's much more limited.
Thank you for that clarification.
I guess then, from the gifting aspect that Robin brought up, I mean, anytime that we can promote economic development, that actually develops revenue for the county to be able to provide services. So I think that's the overall arching public benefit that comes along with something like this.
Constitution's pretty clear. We just need to be able to say that we looked at it and it's okay.
Commissioner Mejia.
Well, my questions got answered, but I guess just on that note, right? Like, I think like Josh stated, we're, we're not the first ones who are doing this model. There's other counties, so I'm sure that other counties have also done that work and we don't have to reinvent the wheel when it comes as well to legal research. Like they've already looked into it well and I'm sure these questions have come up and, and they'll be able to, to let us know.
So do we need, do we give, I mean, I guess just to move this forward?
Sounds like everybody's pretty supportive. Do you guys need one of these?
Yeah, so what we'll do, if you give us the thumbs up, we'll work on, to Robin's point, the phasing of the budget that we have currently, what may or may not need to be included, what we can absorb, and then set out the timeline and the scope for our consultant to engage and let us know what could be possible and how we can move forward. Does that sound good? Anything more?
It will be a contract amendment, so it'll come back to them as a contract amendment.
Thanks, guys.
Good job. Thank you.
Three minutes, another Commissioner item before we get to the next session.
I do, I just want to let everyone know that you've probably received an email and this is an Earth Day Work Party at Burford Park. It is Sunday, April 21st. It goes from 9:45, this one registration starts, to 1:00. And it's basically like a cleanup party, an Ivy Cleanup Party, but they also want to be able to take Commissioners around and show them around Burford Park and as well take them to kind of where the sewer plan is. So, you know, they, they would love for more than just me to attend, but...
You'll come to mine at Fry Cove, District Three, the next weekend.
I, I'll do it. I'll be there.
You're both picking up limbs at the Nine O'Park. Oh, actually, this is the 20th. Yours is?
21st.
Oh, 21st, a Sunday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I could do that.
Two?
Only two, that's all I'm here.
And we don't need to special notices.
Well, I'm going to sneak in there and just not say anything. Just to raise Robin's blunt pressure.
Sometimes isn't it easier just to notice it, just in case?
No, it's, it, notice, special notices at a location like that are not easy.
I'm not going.
And it's not, well, yeah, I mean, we're not going to be testing County business.
By virtue of being at a county park, you will be conducting county business. Sorry.
Okay, I have one volunteer to...
I'll stand across the street and wave and not step foot in the park. Okay, anybody else? Commissioner item before we move on to our next session.
Just as a reminder, Travis is here in case there were any, although...
I wrote down, so Travis, I'm just going to, like, as a matter of course, when I think of it, just writing things down. One question besides the one you already got asked was, do you know if there's been legal review of the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary, the new ILA?
Uh, you know, I, I reviewed a very early draft, conceptually, but it's been some time. I think the last time I saw any documentation was at least a year or two ago. So that, yeah, if you all are thinking about taking action, I would recommend, you know, shooting it out my way, so I can take a look at that.
I've got that on email, Travis. I'll send it to you.
Okay, terrific.
And then the only other really issue that I heard was Commissioner Edwards, at the front end of the meeting, we were talking about our HR policy and...
Does the exception create a unfair labor practice or...
Yeah, so this is a labor issue, which I'll just flag it for you and you, you'll probably need to, you know, let us know. But the question was, we have an agenda item next Tuesday that is going to create a one-time exception to a internal policy where internal, like promotions are limited to like a 5% pay increase, but external or not. Somebody was hired without kind of a, was kind of a, without knowledge of that and now we're sort of going to make a one, we're, we're being asked to make a one-time exception. And we're, we're in the process of changing that policy, so, but sent, but an offer was already made. And so Commissioner Edwards had asked, "Well, you know, by doing that, are we creating anything that creates an illegal issue of an exception?" And some, you know, somebody else didn't get that exception. You know, is it encouraging violations of our policy? Just, just a kind of, you know, bucket of questions there around that potential action of the Board.
Yeah, I, I'd recommend getting that to Jane Futterman. She's our employment law expert in our shop. And you're, you're welcome to CC me as well and I can let Jane know it's coming her way. But I think that would be the best way to handle that, those questions.
Since I worked with Kristen on that item, I can certainly reach out to Jane.
Okay. That was it. Do any Board members have any, their questions for Travis based on items that came up today? Okay. Thank you, Travis, for checking in.
Thank you all.
Okay, it's 11:01. We are, come to the end of our business meeting, so we're adjourned and we're going to pick right up with our elected, we need to take a five-minute break because we didn't have one. So we're going to pick up in about five minutes with appointed directors, open forum.
Can we let Commissioner Klaus know before we get off?
Oh, Commissioner Klaus, we're going to take five minutes or so and then pick up with appointed directors in about, let's say, 11:10.
Is it a new Zoom?
Should be a new Zoom.
Okay.
She's got a thumbs up there. Okay, very good.